Good evening and welcome to NTD News. I'm Stephanie Cox. Here are today's top stories. The House approved a contempt resolution against Steve Bannon. Attorney General Merrick Garland is now left to decide if he should move forward with criminal prosecution of Bannon. U.S. Attorney General Merrick Garland faced heavy scrutiny during today's House Judiciary Committee hearing. He was pressed on his contentious memo directing the FBI to address alleged parent threats to school boards. Volunteers are helping to patrol the southern border to protect border communities from the surge of migrants. We have an exclusive interview with one of the volunteers. And the Biden administration continues promoting its policies to address climate change, but some tell us they're skeptical of the government's role and suggest the climate crisis may be a smokescreen for more government control. Two California ports handle most of the U.S.'s cargo, and lately they've been congested. An expert explains why you might not get your Christmas gifts in time. The House approved a contempt resolution against former chief strategist Steve Bannon in a 229 to 202 vote. Now, the Department of Justice has to decide whether or not to move forward with criminal prosecution. Bannon defied a subpoena to provide private testimony on the January 6 Capitol breach during the House probe. Bannon's lawyer said he won't participate in the probe until a court weighs in on Trump's ability to assert executive privilege in the investigation. The U.S. Attorney's Office said the evaluation of any contempt referral sent to it by the House will be based on the facts and the law. And Congress members pressed Attorney General Merrick Garland on several controversies during the House hearing today. Among them is the Justice Department's recent memo on parents at school board meetings. NTD's Allison Lee brings us more.
Welcome everyone to this morning's hearing on oversight of the Department of Justice.
Parent protests against school boards were a hot topic during the House Judiciary Committee hearing on Thursday. Congressman Burgess Owens asked Attorney General Merrick Garland whether he agrees with the National School Boards Association that parents who attend school board meetings and speak against certain programs should be classified as domestic terrorists.
I do not believe that parents who testify, speak, argue with, complain about school boards and schools should be classified as domestic terrorists or any kind of criminals. This is totally protected by the First Amendment. I take your point that true threats of violence are not protected by the First Amendment. Those are the things we're worried about here. Those are the only things we're worried about here.
Earlier this month, Garland issued a memo to his department saying they should work with local law enforcement to intervene in violence or intimidation targeting school board officials. That's after the National School Boards Association wrote a letter asking the Biden administration to use tools such as the Patriot Act to deal with such issues.
Your first sentence, your memo, very first sentence, you said, "In recent months, there's been a disturbing spike in harassment, intimidation, threats of violence."
Yes.
When did you first review the data showing this so-called disturbing uptick?
So I read the letter, and we have been seeing over time threats-
Whoa, 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 whoa. I didn't ask you, so you read the letter, that's, that's your source?
So let me be clear, this is not a prosecution or an investigation-
Is there some study, some effort, some investigation someone did that said there's been a disturbing uptick? Or you just take the words of the National School Board Association?
The National School Board Association, which represents thousands of school boards and school board members, says that there are these kind of threats.
Congressman Chip Roy also asked Garland about a recent controversy in the Loudoun County Public School System in Virginia.
On October 6th, a mere 15 days ago, inside Broadrun High School in Loudoun County, Virginia, a young girl was sexually assaulted. Attorney General Garland, are you aware that because Loudoun County prosecutors confirmed that the boy who assaulted this young girl in Broadrun High School is the same boy who wore a skirt and went into a girl's bathroom, sodomized and raped a 14-year-old girl in a different Loudoun County high school on May 28th? Are you aware of those facts? The boy was, are you aware firmly, are you aware further that the boy was arrested and charged for the first assault in July, but released from juvenile detention?
This sounds like a state case, and I'm not familiar with it. I'm sorry.
Do you agree with Loudoun parents, you said it is not okay to allow a child that has been charged with a rape to go back into a school in that public school system?
Again, I don't know any of the facts of this case, but, but the way you put it, it certainly sounds like I would agree with you. But I don't know the facts of the case.
Other Congress members pressed Garland on a range of different topics, including Hunter Biden's paintings, the treatment of January 6 detainees, Steve Bannon gun violence, and the Texas abortion law. Allison Lee, NTD News.
Volunteers are signing up for patrol duty along the southern border. They want to deter illegal immigrants from crossing through residential communities. Here's an exclusive interview with one of them.
More creek back behind me here.
Terry Anderson is the founder and director of Patriots at Large. He was patrolling the U.S.-Mexican border when NTD reached out to him. He pulled over to talk to us somewhere between Valverde County and Kenny County, Texas. He said the border towns are disenfranchised. They are left in a position where they have to defend themselves against a surge of migrants who cut through their properties and communities.
You know, the thing that I've noticed is that, and people are, the people that we have talked to, you know, they, they said that they're scared. They say that the people that they talk to in their communities are scared. They don't go out. The streets are kind of quiet. Well, they're really quiet. You see people out working. You don't see any kids on the street. Nobody's in the parks, you know?
He says it's nothing less than an invasion, and he wants to help protect those border communities.
And I think that's what our country needs. I think that, you know, we need to stand together as Americans and, and help protect our fellow American citizens. You know, these are our, these are our brothers and sisters. It's like this part of our country that has been forgotten down here, I think. I mean, obviously, we talk about it, but, and we try to do something about the immigration, but we forget about the communities that are down here.
He recently heard a story about a 70-year-old woman that was assaulted and robbed by immigrants. He says he volunteers to patrol because it's the right thing to do.
Earlier this week, they had actually kind of saw some people, and they actually kind of just by, you know, use of their presence, you know, forced them to take a different direction. And that will, and by doing that, it kind of, then they radioed into DPS or the sheriff, I guess the sheriff, and it kind of funneled these migrants towards where the sheriffs were at, and they were able to apprehend about 30 people, from what I understand.
Anderson said people are volunteering around the country to help out along the border. He even said his 80-year-old uncle wants to come down and help defend the country. Anyone who wants to volunteer or donate can contact patriotsforamericamalicia.com. We asked Customs and Border Patrol for comment on Texans securing their own border. They replied that they defer to the state of Texas on that matter. Jason Perry, NTD News.
Congress is scoping out which programs to cut from Biden's social welfare and climate agenda. Meanwhile, today, the Department of Homeland Security released a new framework for using executive power to combat climate change. But some researchers say the climate crisis is a narrative used as an excuse for more government control. NTD's Melina Wise Cup reports.
The Biden administration created the first-ever DHS Climate Change Action Group. And Thursday, they laid out their climate change plan. It involves informing their employees about climate change and incorporating climate science into their policies, programs, and budgets. But some climate change scientists and researchers are skeptical.
One question being asked here at this climate conference is how much of the climate change concerns are based on evidence? And how much of the climate crisis narrative has to do with government control?
The climate scare has gone on for decades. For example, in the 1970s, the government warned of a possible ice age.
No matter what environmental problem it was, they always had the same solution: massive wealth transfers, sovereignty-limiting treaties. Climate change is merely the latest environmental scare meant to push the same exact set of agendas. And it's just they don't want to argue the merits of converting to socialism. They want to instead do a misdirection and get you worried about, you know, the climate while they impose ridiculous solutions.
Moreno is a previous staff member from Capitol Hill, and he now regularly goes to UN climate summits. He tells us that the UN is actually planning recessions in order to fight climate change, and that the Green New Deal would do just that.
Radically raise energy costs, make people poorer. And then what happens, and I saw this when I was in the U.S. Senate, they come up with programs, "Well, don't worry. Our green policies are causing, you know, all this higher energy rates, but we're going to give you subsidies. And then, don't worry, because we're going to pay you. We're going to give you more benefits, more subsidies." And then what happens? All the people receiving it are going to vote for the politicians supporting it.
Energy policies could also lead to more government control through limiting usage, because the sun doesn't always shine and the wind doesn't always blow.
But if they really wanted clean energy, they would be all in for nuclear power. The thing is, you don't see that. You see them advocating for unreliable sources, like solar, like wind, and then they throw in battery backups. If you can control the amount of power somebody uses, you can control their lives.
For example, Europe is more progressive than the U.S. in its climate agenda. And back in 2011, the UK power chief warned that families would have to get used to only using power when it's available. And here in the U.S., Americans await new climate policies. Lawmakers on Capitol Hill right now pushing for a strong climate agenda in Biden's Build Back Better Plan. Melina Wise Cup, NTD News.
According to the Federal Reserve, businesses are reporting that vaccine mandates contribute to nationwide labor shortages. They say some businesses are also concerned about implementing mandates due to potential loss of workers. NTD's Grace Coulter has the details.
Eight times a year, the Federal Reserve releases a report on the current economic conditions called the Beige Book. The most recent report released Wednesday acknowledged nationwide labor shortages and cited vaccine mandates as one of the contributing factors. The report said that while employment has increased at a moderate rate in recent weeks, the U.S. economy's been dampened by a low supply of workers, partially due to vaccine mandates. In its summary of the overall national economic activity, the Fed said firms reported high turnover as workers left for other jobs or retired. Childcare issues and vaccine mandates were widely cited as contributing to the problem, along with COVID-related absences. Individual Fed banks reported cases of employees quitting over mandates. And while some regions reported that few businesses lost employees over the mandates, others said companies were worried that implementing a vaccine requirement could cost them workers. According to the most recent data from the Labor Department, around 4.3 million workers quit their jobs in August. That figure represents an all-time high since record-keeping began in December 2000. Last month, President Joe Biden ordered a vaccine mandate for federal workers, healthcare staff, and federal contractors. Biden also announced a mandate for private businesses, but it has yet to go into effect. Grace Coulter, NTD News.
Southern California's Los Angeles and Long Beach ports handle the most ocean cargo of any port in the United States. And they're heavily congested. A financial expert shares his thoughts on the supply chain crisis with NTD's David Lam.
According to a ranking by the World Bank and IHS Market, the Los Angeles and Long Beach ports are among the least efficient in the world. These ports and arriving cargo ships face congestion in California.
So we used to have a more service and travel and experience-based economy. Well, with all those being shut down, the only place people could spend money was on goods.
Toll is a financial expert and a former boat captain at the Port of LA. He argues that the ports are efficient and have been operating 24/7 for a long time already. Toll said that businesses were holding back inventory during the pandemic and referenced the 2008 recession.
And so while on one hand, we had supply intentionally being decreased by companies thinking that there would not be demand, demand was increased while people were sitting at home and spending their stimulus checks.
The upcoming Christmas shopping may be affected, but might not be as bad as expected, Toll says.
You might not get exactly the color gift that you were looking for. You might not get the exact brand. But I don't think it's going to be as bad as we've been hearing about on the news or on social media.
He says business regulations are making it difficult for domestic manufacturing to compete with overseas manufacturing such as China, as they don't have similar regulations.
The U.S. consumer has become so reliant on these inexpensively-made products from the Asian markets that we're reliant on it, and we're stuck. That's, that's the only way, is to get it through the West Coast ports, onto wheels, onto rails, into aircraft, and move through distribution centers out to the final consumer.
Now, on Wednesday, California Governor Gavin Newsom signed an executive order directing state agencies to identify ways to alleviate the congestion at the California ports. David Lam, NTD News, California.
Five Democratic senators criticized Facebook for launching a cryptocurrency wallet. The senators say the tech giant cannot be trusted with overseeing digital currencies. Here's NTD's Cynthia Kai with the details.
Facebook launched a pilot of its Novi crypto wallet in the United States and Guatemala on October 19th. However, five Democratic senators wrote a letter to Facebook CEO Mark Zuckerberg urging him to stop the development of Novi. U.S. Senators Brian Schatz, Tina Smith, Richard Blumenthal, Sherrod Brown, and Elizabeth Warren said in their letter, "Facebook cannot be trusted to manage a payment system or digital currency when its existing ability to manage risks and keep consumers safe has proven wholly insufficient." They argued that Facebook has repeatedly shown itself indifferent to the harms its products cause. The current pilot phase tests the crypto wallet's core feature functions and its own operational capabilities. After downloading the Novi digital wallet app, users participating in the pilot program can fund their accounts and transact with the Paxos dollar, a cryptocurrency pegged to the value of the U.S. dollar. David Marcus, head of Facebook Financial, says once Facebook's own cryptocurrency, Diam, receives regulatory approval and goes live, the Novi cryptocurrency wallet will use Diam for transactions. Marcus wrote in a Twitter post, "We care about interoperability, and we want to do it right." But U.S. senators urge Facebook to immediately discontinue its Novi crypto wallet pilot and to commit that Diam will not be brought to the market. Cynthia Kai, NTD News, California.
Earlier this week, San Francisco officials announced the city would offer scholarships for youth who get the COVID vaccine. The program targets middle and high school students. Here's NTD's Eileen Eng with more.
The San Francisco State University, Department of Public Health, and Unified School District partnered to offer scholarships to youth who get the COVID-19 vaccine. City residents ages 12 to 17 are eligible for a drawing to win a scholarship. SF State will offer 10 scholarships to fund four years of undergraduate tuition.
For those of you who have already went to college or who are enrolled in college, this does not include you. This only includes our kids ages 12 to 17, who can go to a number of sites, which we're going to talk about, where you can register as long as you show proof of vaccination. And those who are still holding out, waiting to get vaccinated, here's your chance at a full ride in your backyard at San Francisco State University.
The youth must register from a list of six participating vaccination locations in the city by November 13th.
These scholarships provide us an opportunity to further public health goals and, and as importantly, help the city and San Francisco Unified by building the next generation of leaders for the city's workforce.
The city's data claims that 90% of residents ages 12 to 17 have received at least one dose of the vaccine. On Twitter, some people are supportive of the move. Others commented saying it's bribery and an embarrassment to higher education, while another pointed out that Governor Newsom's lottery incentive in June was ineffective. Eileen Eng, NTD News, California.
A former Minneapolis police officer has been sentenced to nearly five years in prison, the maximum penalty for the conviction. Around four years ago, the former officer fatally shot a 911 caller. He was initially convicted of third-degree murder, but the charge was tossed last month, leading to today's new sentencing.
Former Minneapolis police officer Mohamed Noor was resentenced Thursday to 57 months behind bars. The former officer fatally shot 40-year-old Justine Bruszczyk Damon in 2017 when responding to her 911 call. According to Noor and his partner, Bruszczyk Damon startled the officers when they arrived on the scene. Noor said his intent for firing the shot was to stop the perceived threat and save his partner's life. Noor was initially convicted of third-degree murder and sentenced to 12 and a half years in prison. But last month, the state Supreme Court tossed the charge, saying the statute didn't fit the facts of the case. This left his conviction for second-degree manslaughter as the top conviction, leading to Thursday's new sentencing. The judge gave Noor the maximum sentence for manslaughter because she said he also endangered the surrounding community. Dawn Damon, the slain woman's fiance, told the court via Zoom that she would have shown mercy toward her killer. While disappointed by last month's court ruling, Damon told Noor that he forgave him and said, "All I ask is that you use this experience to do good for other people. Be the example of how to transform beyond adversity," adding, "That's what Justine would want." Noor spoke briefly and apologized for the pain he caused the victim's family. He said he was deeply grateful for Damon's forgiveness and said he will take his advice. The former officer has already served over 30 months in prison. The judge said he'll receive credit for this time, meaning he'll have just over two years left to serve. Grace Coulter, NTD News.
The FBI confirmed today that human remains found in a Florida nature preserve belonged to Brian Laundrie. He was a person of interest in the murder of his girlfriend, Gabby Petito. The couple was on a cross-country road trip when Petito died. The FBI found the remains, a backpack, and a notebook yesterday in an area that used to be underwater during earlier searches. And the Boston Celtics' Enes Kanter is calling out the Chinese regime's treatment of Tibetans. He used words like brutal and cultural genocide. And reportedly, Celtics games are already being pulled in China. NTD's Don Ma has more.
The NBA could be in the hot seat again in China. Boston Celtics center Enes Kanter blasted Chinese Communist Party leader Xi Jinping, calling him a brutal dictator.
Brutal dictator of China, Xi Jinping. I have a message for you and your henchmen. I will say it again, again, and again, loud and clear. I hope you hear me. Free Tibet, free Tibet, free Tibet.
Kanter tweeted the video before his Celtics Knicks game on Wednesday. He criticized the Chinese Communist Party's treatment of Tibetans.
Tibetan monks, nuns, intellectuals, writers, poets, community leaders, activists, and many more have been detained, sent to political reeducation classes, subject to torture, lengthy interrogations, and even been executed.
And during his game against the Knicks, he wore sneakers with the words "Free Tibet" emblazoned on them. He says Tibetans have no freedom in Communist China.
They are not allowed to study and learn their language and culture freely. They are not allowed to travel freely. They are not allowed to access information freely. The Tibetan people are not even allowed to worship freely.
He says this is cultural genocide. He's seen plenty of support on Twitter and Facebook, but not so much on Chinese social media platforms. On Weibo, it seems search results for the basketball player's name have been removed. Meanwhile, a fan page for the Boston Celtics with over 600,000 followers said it will stop updating its social feed. One Chinese netizen said, "I've been an old Celtics fan for more than 10 years. After Kanter did this, I won't support the Celtics team a single day longer." The Chinese Foreign Ministry even got involved. A spokesperson said that Kanter's message isn't worth refuting, but added that Beijing will not accept attacks that discredit Tibet. The fallout is reminiscent of a similar incident in 2019, where Houston Rockets executive Daryl Morey tweeted in support of pro-democracy protesters in Hong Kong. It led to state-run media CCTV boycotting NBA game broadcasts in China. Kanter is of Turkish heritage and has been vocal in the past on a range of political matters. Don Ma, NTD News.
Coming up, New York City's mayoral candidates debate, Curtis Sliwa versus Eric Adams. They went over a lot, and we've got a few highlights. And New York City has a new observatory 1,000 feet above the ground. It even has a glass elevator on the outside of the building. See that and more in a moment here on NTD News. For the first time, New York City's mayoral candidates debated and gave viewers an idea of what to expect from them. There was some mudslinging, but we got answers about vaccine mandates, crime, and more. NTD's Miguel Moreno has that story.
The next mayor of New York City will be either Eric Adams or Curtis Sliwa. They had their first debate Wednesday night on NBC. A moderator started it off by asking the Democratic candidate whether he supports the mayor's latest COVID-19 vaccine mandate for government workers.
I was on the ground during COVID, and I know what happened. I saw family members dropping off their loved ones to hospitals, never to see them again. I saw how it traumatized our businesses, how it destroyed our economy. I believe the mayor's action today was correct. I would have handled it differently. I would have sat down with my union members.
Sliwa, the Republican, has opposed the updated mandate, which will end the option for a negative COVID-19 test. So a moderator asked Sliwa how he would protect hospital workers and the people they interact with. He didn't answer the question, but he expressed concern over how the city has begun treating its essential workers.
Now, what did we do to the teachers? What did we do to the healthcare workers who were crawling into the belly of the beast during the lockdown and the pandemic? We cheered them at night at 7:00. Then all of a sudden, we decided, de Blasio, who has supported Eric Adams here, he better team, that all of a sudden they would lose their jobs.
A lot of big cities are dealing with surges in crime. New York City is one of them. Adams was asked how he would manage the NYPD.
I'm not a critic of public safety. I say it over and over again. Public safety is a prerequisite to prosperity, public safety, and justice. We're going to change the ecosystem of public safety. We're going to ensure that, number one, I will have the backs of my police officers. But that covenant, if you decide not to understand the nobility of public protection, you won't serve in my department.
Sliwa supports what he called "stop, question, and frisk" without numerical quotas for officers.
And I suggest that it be used, especially in areas where there is gang activity, gang wars, constant shootings, constant gun activity, that it be at least utilized by police officers who have to preemptively stop the gangs, stop the gun violence, because it's going to take its toll on innocent citizens.
The candidates went over several other issues. They have one debate left next week, and the election will be held on November 2nd. Miguel Moreno, NTD News.
New York City has one of the most beautiful skylines in the world, and seeing it from above can be breathtaking. Now, there's a new attraction that lets you do just that. NTD's Arian Pasdar was at the grand opening 90 stories above Manhattan.
The experience starts with this elevator, bringing visitors to the 91st floor. Right after getting out, an open hall awaits with glass panels on all sides. The hall offers views over all five boroughs and even parts of New Jersey. Most attendees at the opening were most fascinated by the south side view overlooking downtown Manhattan. The observatory is called AIR because of its sunny and refreshing design. It aims to give people an escape from the concrete jungle. On top of that, a glass elevator has been added, going from the 93rd floor on the outside of the building all the way to the top. Once arrived, it will stay there for a few minutes and then go down again, offering the best views possible. And the new observatory has more than just views. Besides enjoying views and just looking at things, visitors can come into this interactive room where they can touch and play with the balloons and, of course, take great pictures with amazing backgrounds. Of course, snacks, coffee, and more can be purchased as well, all while relaxing 1,000 feet above ground and looking over the Big Apple. Mayoral candidate Eric Adams says the new attraction shows not only that New York City is back, but that America is back, which embodies the American dream.
There's no French dream, there's no German dream, there's no Polish dream, but damn it, that's an American dream.
The observatory opens to the public on Thursday, and the entry costs $35 per person. Arian Pasdar, NTD News, New York.
Coming up, a gas explosion in China flattens an entire street, injuring many and destroying vehicles and buildings. Some are questioning the official narrative that it started in a restaurant. And in the middle of a power crisis, China looks for energy from the U.S. Beijing is set to double its import of natural gas from America. That and more on NTD News after the break.
90% of news outlets in the United States are controlled by six corporations. They're not out to tell you the truth of what's happening. They're out to tell you the picture of the world that they represent. The mission of the Epoch Times is to chase the truth, to ground all statements and facts, and prevent people from being misled. This is a battle, a battle between truth and deceit. Subscribe today and join the Americans who are seeking truth and tradition. We'd love to have you on board.
We're becoming more and more urban. We lose our connection with nature.
This little girl lives in a world of natural beauty, nature all around her. Not everybody has this opportunity. Things are growing all around her, all sort of handmade things. Artists portrayed a scene that is so comforting and so grounded that we can experience this ourselves. The artist herself has to be absolutely natural. And it's not easy to do because children are hard to paint. Birds are hard to paint. They don't sit still. This is quite an accomplishment, reflecting nature back to us. It's just a pure, natural painting.
A gas explosion in a northern Chinese city wiped out almost an entire street. Footage from the scene shows buildings being smashed to the ground and people covered with blood carried away in ambulances. Local officials say the explosion happened at a restaurant.
At least four people were killed and dozens were injured in an explosion in northeast China's Shenyang City. The explosion originated from a restaurant Thursday morning. The shockwaves severely damaged nearby buildings. A bus was passing by when the explosion hit, and now only the metal frames remain. More than ten passengers onboard were injured. Official reports say it was a gas explosion.
A friend of mine happened to pass by the scene. He told me a lot of people were carried away on stretchers. Some have blood all over their bodies. Ambulances took many people away.
According to a Chinese media interview with a nearby shop worker, the bus was fully loaded with passengers. She said the shockwaves pushed the bus almost sixty feet away. NTD cannot independently verify the death toll, but witnesses say the numbers could increase.
It was a big street during rush hour. Buses and private vehicles were busy moving.
Footage shows the explosion creating a mushroom cloud and dust particles covering cars and buildings nearby.
All passersby, those not injured, got dust on their heads and bodies or broken glass.
The witness says broken window glass seems to fall from the sky at any time. All nearby shops and buildings are temporarily closed. Some residents doubt that a gas explosion can be this powerful. The neighborhood reportedly just finished renovating old gas pipelines. It's unclear whether the explosion is related to the renovations.
China gets help from a U.S. company to solve its energy crisis. Beijing is set to double its import of natural gas from America. And a Japanese company is investing billions of dollars in the U.S., while another company from Japan is fined $100,000 for choosing the wrong day to launch a new product in China. NTD's Tiffany Meyer has more.
Where can China turn to for help while in the throes of its energy crisis? It is turning to the U.S. Beijing is said to import more natural gas from America, more than double the current rate. This after Chinese state-run companies made long-term supply deals with one of the biggest U.S. gas producers, Venture Global LNG. According to a Financial Times report, from 2023 on, China's oil and gas giant Sinopek and its trading arm will get 5 million tons of liquefied natural gas per year from the American company. In comparison, last year, China imported only about 4 million tons of gas from the U.S. The deals seem to be good news for the communist regime, as the country's power squeeze is leading to blackouts both in factories and residential areas and hitting China hard. A Japanese electronics giant got a fine of over $150,000 in China for the date it chose to launch a new product. Sony Group's Chinese subsidiary got the fine over violations of China's advertising laws. It began this summer, when the company announced it would hold a product launch event on July 7th. That's the anniversary of an incident in 1937 that triggered a war between China and Japan. Sony canceled its plan following backlash from Chinese netizens. But Chinese authorities still issued the fine last week, saying Sony's move hurt the dignity of the nation, and this is against China's advertising laws. Sony's fine is the most allowed under Chinese law for this kind of accusation. Economic interactions between the U.S. and Japan seem to be increasing. Japanese automaker Toyota is planning to invest more than $3 billion in the U.S. through 2030 to make automotive batteries. Toyota is the world's largest automaker by volume. The next plant aims to start production in four years. It's expected to create about 2,000 new jobs in America. Toyota's North America CEO Ted Ogawa said in a statement, "The investment will help usher in more affordable electrified vehicles for U.S. consumers."
Education is a key part of the Chinese Communist Party's warfare against foreign countries. A French senator says the threat is very serious, since the government spends much less money on protecting universities' independence than the CCP spends on infiltrating them. NTD correspondent David Vives has the story.
Universities in France are vulnerable to influence by the Chinese Communist Party, or CCP. That's according to Senator Etienne Blanc, who's part of a commission that measures CCP interference on French campuses. He said that the Chinese regime's efforts are underestimated and could pose a serious threat to the university's independence.
If we compare our means of defense with the Chinese means to exert Beijing's influence, China's means are really considerable. We have to find new ways to protect ourselves.
The senator quoted a 650-page military report released in September on Beijing's influence operations. The report highlights the continuous efforts of the CCP to use education as a form of warfare against Western countries. In 2018, a Chinese university director addressed teachers who would be sent abroad to Confucius Institutes, saying their goal was to integrate the red DNA and spread it to future generations in Western countries. Aside from the Institutes, there's another method of warfare that may be even more dangerous: the monitoring of Chinese students. In 2015, Chinese regime leader Xi Jinping said at a conference that Chinese students in foreign countries are a priority target for monitoring, and that they should be prevented from being infected by Western ideas. The military report quotes examples of different strategies used on Chinese students when they speak out against the CCP while abroad. The regime might have their parents arrested in mainland China or make them the target of cyberbullying campaigns by other students who work with the CCP. And the increasing number of Chinese students within universities in the U.S., Europe, Canada, and Australia can be used as powerful leverage for warfare, according to the report. Senator Blanc says it's important to recognize the methods used and the threat of CCP in universities.
The CCP considers our system to be not good for people, for humanity. It constrains, forbids, threatens, and uses violence. For us, this is fundamentally incompatible with who we are. We think the opposite, that our system is good, that it protects people, that it protects humanity.
David Vives, NTD News.
Coming up, authorities in Bavaria investigate millions of dollars in sales tax fraud by Italy's most powerful criminal group. And police raided a luxury car dealership confiscating Lamborghinis belonging to the mafia. That and more here on NTD News. And the German police confiscated several luxury vehicles at a car dealer in Bavaria on Wednesday. It's part of a Europe-wide mafia probe. Police say they were investigating a massive sales tax fraud committed by members of one of the largest organized crime groups in the world. This report from NTD's Eddie Aitken.
Police in Germany seized luxury cars with a combined value of over 800,000 pounds. The cars were confiscated at a dealership in Upper Bavaria. Some belonged to the Endrangetta, the most powerful mafia group in Italy.
We confiscated several high-quality vehicles here, and we believe with this type of car, a massive sales tax fraud was committed. We're talking about damages amounting to at least 13 million euros.
Among the cars is a low-mileage yellow Lamborghini Urus with an asking price of 290,000 pounds.
The system is known as a sales tax carousel. Different companies sell high-quality cars back and forth across Europe, and in the end, the sales tax is reclaimed, which was never paid in the first place. By the time the fraud becomes apparent, the companies have disappeared or the traces are lost.
Police raids also took place in Italy and Bulgaria as part of a Europe-wide investigation.
These vehicles will now be sold as quickly as possible to get some of the money back to the state in order to somewhat minimize the damages incurred by this sales tax fraud.
The Endrangetta is based in the southern region of Calabria. Their notoriety has surpassed Sisley's most famous Cosa Nostra to become one of the largest organized crime groups in the world. The criminal organization is accused of tax evasion worth millions of pounds. Eddie Aitken, NTD News.
The Polish prime minister on Thursday defended his nation before a meeting of fellow leaders in Brussels. This after Poland's Constitutional Court questions the supremacy of EU law. He said Poland will not bow to EU blackmail, but will seek to solve ongoing disputes. While several member states are keen to punish Warsaw, Germany warns of isolating Poland. We hear more from NTD's Anna Rodriguez.
EU leaders meeting in Brussels for a two-day summit. They were set to discuss urgent topics like energy prices, climate change, migration, and COVID-19. But a dispute with Poland will likely dominate the gathering. Two weeks ago, Poland's highest court ruled that elements of EU law were incompatible with the country's constitution. Poland's prime minister on Thursday in Brussels said his country is willing to follow EU law, but opposed the power grab from Brussels.
Some European institutions assume the right to decide on matters that have not been assigned to them. They assume competencies which have not been handed over to them in treaties.
In challenging a central tenet of EU integration, that EU law trumps national decision-making, the case risks a fundamental crisis for the bloc. In response, the EU Commission has barred Warsaw from tapping into almost 50 billion pounds of COVID-19 emergency funds. Warsaw also risks more penalties from the bloc's top court.
That's why we will not act under the pressure of blackmail. We are ready for dialogue. We do not agree to the ever-expanding competencies, but we will, of course, talk about how to resolve the current dispute with understanding and dialogue.
While several member states are keen to bring Warsaw into line, the German chancellor wants of isolating Poland.
Rule of law is a core aspect of the European Union. At the same time, we have to find ways of coming back together, because a cascade of cases at the European Court is not a solution.
It was a power play between a nation and the EU that also set Britain on course for Brexit. But Poland has dismissed the idea of leaving the EU in a pole exit. Anna Rodriguez, NTD News.
A professor from Edinburgh Napier University has pioneered a way to change whiskey production waste into biofuel through a traditional fermentation process. He says the biofuel can replace petrol in most traditional cars without any modification. Ahead of the UN Climate Summit in Scotland, he's calling for investment for mass production. NTD's Eddie Aitken has the story.
Whiskey production, one of Scotland's most important industries, could soon fuel the country's economy in more than one way. A Scottish company is turning the leftover waste from whiskey-making into everyday chemicals that are usually refined from oil. The biofuel produced by Professor Martin Tangney's company, Celtic Renewables, can be used as a direct replacement for the petrol in cars.
So we at Celtic Renewables are pioneering a process whereby we can take residues from industries such as the whiskey industry and convert them into high-value products, namely butanol, which is actually being used to power this car right now.
Whiskey is made from barley, yeast, and water, and leaves behind spent barley grains known as draff and a sugary water called pot ale. The waste is often disposed of as an animal feed or even pumped into the sea. The process of converting the waste produces common chemicals that are used in everything from fuel and food production to medicine and cosmetics. Tangney says these chemicals could be used long into the future if they are produced in a sustainable way.
This is made from living carbon, essentially. It's from a residue of an industry that's one of the most important industries in the Scottish economy, and we can take their residues and turn them into something that we need right now, made from sustainable resources.
The fermentation process Celtic Renewables is reviving used to be a huge global industry, but finally shut down because of competition from petrochemicals and the cost of raw materials. Tangney says with her patented process, this company can use organic waste rather than high-value crops.
At Celtic Renewables, we've taken a biotechnology process that was developed 100 years ago to make the chemicals acetone, butanol, and ethanol, the ABE fermentation. And we've revived it for a modern world to make sustainable chemicals using low-value wastes and residues as our raw material.
The demonstration plant in Grangemouth can produce 1 million liters of advanced sustainable biochemicals from 50,000 tons of draff and pot ale and other raw materials such as potatoes or almost any organic waste. Just days before Glasgow welcomes leaders from around the world to the United Nations Climate Summit, COP26, Tangney is calling for action.
This has to be the call, where we stop talking about why we need to tackle climate change and tell everybody how, how we do it, how we pay for it, how is it going to happen? A roadmap, a strategy, not an exercise in target setting.
Tangney's company now plans to build five large-scale refineries around the world in the next five years, and is calling on governments and investors to back them. Eddie Aitken, NTD News.
The Royal Mint says it's planning to build a plant that could reclaim hundreds of kilograms of gold and other precious metals from electronic waste such as mobile phones and laptops.
Gold and silver are highly conductive, and small quantities are embedded in circuit boards and other hardware, along with other precious metals. Most of this material is never recovered with discarded electronics, often dumped into landfill or incinerated. Royal Mint says it has partnered with a Canadian startup, which has developed chemical solutions to extract metals from the circuit boards. The solutions can extract gold in seconds and turn it into a gold-rich liquid. Then using precipitation, the gold can be recovered from the liquid. The Mint's chief growth officer, Sean Millitt, says the process is currently used at small scale, and the new plant in Wales should be up and running within the next couple of years.
Coming up, a large dinosaur skeleton is sold to a private U.S. collector for nearly $8 million in Paris. Find out more after the short break.
Hello, I'm Mike Vindell, inventor of MyPillow. Thanks to your support, you've helped make MyPillow become one of the fastest-growing companies in America. Over the last 12 years, you've helped MyPillow create thousands of jobs right here in the USA.
When I got MyPillow, I'm asleep almost immediately. I stay asleep at night, and I wake up more well-rested in the morning.
That's why I invented MyPillow. My patented fill adjusts to your exact individual needs and helps keep your neck supported and aligned. I'm interrupting this commercial right now. Retailers have canceled MyPillow, and to thank you for your support, I'm going to pass the savings directly on to you. Go to mypillow.com right now to get deep discounts on all MyPillow products. For example, you can get my premium MyPillows regularly $69.98, now just $29.98, the lowest price ever.
Whether you've seen Michelangelo's Sistine Chapel frescoes in person or not, an immersive exhibit in New York City will give you an entirely different experience. Visitors get to see life-sized replicas of the famed frescoes up close and in detail. NTD's Chenny Wu has more.
Michelangelo is widely considered one of the greatest artists of all time. Now, for a limited time, you can see the Renaissance masters Sistine Chapel frescoes up close from a never-before-seen perspective.
The stunning frescoes, which previously could only be seen from 60 feet below on the Sistine Chapel's arched ceilings, can now be viewed from mere inches, and you don't
and you don't have to travel out of the country.
Post-pandemic, and even currently now, it's still pretty hard for some people to travel around the world. So this is a cool way to bring that experience to people locally.
There's no photography allowed in the Sistine Chapel, but here, visitors can take as many pictures as they want.
What we've done is we've tried to replicate how the lighting hits the same way as in the Sistine Chapel, and we've done our best to orientate all of the images to be the same as how they're originally positioned on the ceiling. I mean, these paintings took Michelangelo five years to complete, and you can really just see the amount of detail and creativity that came into all of these paintings throughout that time.
Visitors shared with us their thoughts on the exhibit. Antonio Encarnacion, who has seen the original work in Vatican City, says the exhibit gave him a deeper appreciation of the art.
It's a very humbling experience because it's the first time that we saw it up close. And finally, we understood some of the images and the details behind the paintings of Michelangelo as well.
I love sculpture, and this is as close to sculpture as you can get in two dimensions. It's excellent.
Don't live in New York City? Not to worry. The Sistine Chapel exhibit is available in California and Ohio and will be coming soon to Florida and Tennessee. Chen Wu, NTD News, New York.
Big John is the largest triceratops dinosaur ever discovered by paleontologists. The skeleton just sold for over $7 million at a Paris auction. NTD's Fay Quarter has more.
Big John roamed modern-day South Dakota more than 66 million years ago. It's named after the owner of the land where the dinosaur's bones were found.
It's being acquired by an American collector, and that individual is absolutely thrilled with the idea of being able to bring a piece like this to his personal use.
The first piece of bone from the supersized skeleton was found in 2014, and by 2015, paleontologists had unearthed 60% of the skeleton, a rare feat. The skull alone is over eight feet long and six feet wide, and over 200 pieces were painstakingly put together in preparation for the auction.
It set many records as far as being one of the largest and one of the most intact pieces that exists out there.
The auction house estimated the skeleton would fetch roughly $1.5 million, but the hammer price, before commission and other costs, was just shy of $6.4 million. A T-Rex skeleton auctioned for $31.8 million in New York last year. Big John sold to an unidentified U.S. buyer.
We still don't know his final destination because we only know that it's a private individual, but we have no idea if that's meant to be donated or loaned for long-term terms in a museum.
Fay Quarter, NTD News.
One of the world's last two northern white rhinos, a mother and her daughter, is being retired from a breeding program aimed at saving the species from extinction. Scientists made the announcement today. NTD's Arlene Richards has more.
Najin 32 is the mother of Fatu, who is now the only donor left in the program, which aims to implant artificially-developed embryos into another, more abundant species of rhino in Kenya. There are no known living males, and neither of the two remaining northern white rhinos can carry a calf to term. Northern white rhinos, which are actually gray, used to roam freely in several countries in East and Central Africa, but their numbers fell sharply due to the widespread poaching for their horns. Scientists hope to implant embryos made from the rhino's egg cells and frozen sperm from deceased males into surrogate mothers. The team hopes to be able to deliver its first northern white rhino calf in three years and a wider population in the next two decades.
And that's all for today's news. Thanks for tuning in. I'm Stephanie Cox.
Before we go, here's something you should know. Don't forget you can catch all of NTD's programs on television. NTD Business premieres live Mondays through Fridays at 5:00 p.m. We broadcast on many of your favorite platforms, Apple TV and Roku, for example. We're also rapidly growing on cable, satellite, and over the air all across the United States. Just go to ntd.com/tv, type in your zip code, and find all the ways you can watch NTD.